Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Mr. Congdon.
Present.
Ms. Boyle.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Feather.
Present.
Mrs. Hellenback.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Parentana.
Present.
Mr. Rudy is not present. Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I would like to ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence for Mr. Robert Santa. Nishamani lost a very fine gentleman that we all grew close to, and I would just like to pay a moment of respect. Thank you. Prior to the meeting, and I apologize, we're getting a little bit of a late start. We let Steve talk in executive session, so we ran a little bit late. But we had an executive session where we discussed matters of employment issues related to labor relations, current litigations, and obviously the position for board vacancy. At this time, do we have any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
No announcements. Superintendent's report, Mr. Jones, please.
I'd like to highlight a few things in my report and actually add a couple others. One thing to add is the fact that our teachers the last two days, these were add-on days because of our weather. Students didn't have to come, teachers did come. You can imagine how exciting that can be for the adults in our building to come back for those two days. But we purposely did plan some engaging professional development activities under the title of Nishamani Ignites. I want to get the right title. Nishamani Ignites: Academic Choice. And the reason for that title was twofold. There was a lot of choice for our professionals in terms of what they were able to do, but it's also kind of echoing what's in our strategic plan about providing academic choice for students. And so our teachers had a wonderful opportunity to pick and choose areas of interest, activities that they were participating in, and many of them reported back to really enjoying the two extra days that they had. And here's an example, one response. Thanks to those who developed these two days, they were so well-planned and inspirational, and yet it was in a relaxing learning environment. There were actually too many good choices to pick from. This was the perfect way to end the year. So I just want to thank Dr. Hancock and the curriculum instruction people for all the hard work that they did. Those kinds of days don't just happen. It takes a lot of work behind the scenes, and we're really proud of the work we were able to do for our faculty here over the course of Monday and Tuesday of this week. Just last week, we did have a high school graduation. We couldn't have scripted the weather better than what we had. That's not typical for June. The stadium looked wonderful. People commented on the Facebook images of the students in their gowns with the green grass background that was there. It was just really a beautiful, beautiful night, a great ceremony, a great end to a very successful school year. We also had move-up ceremonies in all of our middle schools, and those were nice affairs held during the school day for parents and family to be able to attend. I don't know if you saw, but we were actually able to, Mr. Stanley, our community relations person, was able to get the new digital board to actually flash a congratulatory message for our class in the Shamini High School. That was nice, nice of the company to humor us, and nice of Mr. Stanley to think of that idea, able to support our graduates in that endeavor. We had a nice Tawanka plaque dedication. We did a little ribbon-cutting back at the beginning of the year, and Action News was out then. We had a nice opportunity to invite all the participants in this community who helped get the Tawanka projects off the ground, and we just unveiled both plaques that are up there now on the inside foyer. We had some students involved, the early act members, a service club right there out of the Tawanka, did a really nice job of helping support that effort that night, and the teachers who run that club, so we thank all of them. Tawanka also did have a nice celebration of Flag Day. The school at night celebrated and came back the next day. And I literally reference it because we don't know, we don't talk a lot about Flag Day, June 14th. I know it because one of my brothers' is June 14th birthday, so in my house, there's always a flag on the cake that day. But I reference it because it's part of that mission statement that we have about productive citizenship. And so Tawanka, there, a little early in that elementary timeframe where kids are able to focus in on Flag Day, what it means to be part of this American experience, and it was well-received by the community, well-received within the school as well. They did a lot of hard work on that event. I haven't mentioned it, but I should. We've talked about varsity sports often, but we should talk about the Maple Point Boys baseball team. The varsity baseball team here at Maple Point went 11-0 under Coach Neil French this year, and they were the Bucks County League South champions, so congratulations to them and their effort here at the middle school. Sandberg had a walk-a-thon at the close of this school year, back in June 9th, to support Mason Chandler Allen Memorial Foundation. It was created in honor of Mason, a 13-year-old Sandberg student who lost his life to cancer. And through that walk-a-thon, through t-shirt sales, a raffle, and other fundraisers, it's just how Sandberg operates. They just keep going. $10,000 was able to be raised, and it's money that's going to be used to initiate different scholarships, different recognitions awards that are going to be given out at the elementary, middle school, and high school level in his memory. And so they did really nice work there at Sandberg. I want to also identify the fact that our high school yearbook was recognized. Herff Jones is the company that produces, prints our book for us, and we are included in a publication called Ideas That Fly. And so our yearbook was selected among thousands across the nation that Herff Jones is involved with. We were one of a number of yearbooks selected amongst that large group. And so congratulations to their advisor, Terry O'Neill. And then finally, I do want to point out, we talk a lot about our college-going culture, and many of these students will be college-going as well, but there are a cluster of students in our information technology course, course two, and that after they've taken this second level of this course, they take a Microsoft Office Specialist test, and they all, 100% -- the history here at Nishamani is 100% of our students who go through this program and take this test achieve Microsoft Office Specialist certification for Excel. And when you read through the litany of the different things that they can do, as soon as they start talking about pivot tables, you know they're beyond us, most of us, right? You know, they can do a lot of good work with Excel. And in today's business world, that's a real advantage, to be able to put that certificate out and talk about that. They say in today's world, as much as that diploma is important, these certification programs become very important, too, because people understand and know what that means. And so right here at Nishamani, students are able to get that leg up and that opportunity to kind of use that as a springboard. So that's kind of nice of our business department to actually coordinate that for our students, and congratulations to them. And that's the end of my report. It leads us into the presentations, so I'd like to introduce myself. And Mrs. Markowitz, we're going to talk a little bit about the budget that's on the agenda today. Hello, everyone. So we've done a lot of work on our budget. This is our final presentation. We actually have presented this information in committee form for a number of months now. This is, I'm learning the Pennsylvania process. I now understand what it means to have a preliminary proposed budget, a proposed budget, a preliminary final budget, and a final budget. I know the sequence, I know the timing. It's all new for me, but I thought the process worked really well. This was our calendar of events, and really, we probably could have started that calendar off in October. We'll start that calendar in August this year, and I'll explain why in the next slide. But certainly from January, when you get into the proposed preliminary budget timeframe and right through from there, we're active. And so we're at the last step, the last stage of a lot of conversation, both administratively in district as well as with our board and here in public in committee meetings. What I'm talking about in October is that the district purposely stopped to talk about, well, what are our budget assumptions? And so we had a meeting, and again, it was a committee meeting, and many of the board members participated, and we developed what we call budget assumptions. Things that we assume should be something that we want to develop into the upcoming year's budget, or assumptions that we know are going to impact that budget. And so you can see, this is not a full list of the assumptions, but these are some highlights of things that were costly, that we knew were going to impact the 1718 budget as we developed it. So things like an increase in salaries, we knew where that number was going to come in. The Peasars increase, and you're going to see a slide, Mrs. Markowitz is going to take you through that. The fact that we talked about adding six, up to six elementary teachers to address some class-size concerns, that was built in as part of our assumptions way back at the end of October, beginning of November. Capital improvements. The district has done some work. I'm going to steal a little bit of Mrs. Markowitz's thunder when I say that we've budgeted $500,000 in the past, and really, I had talked to the board about, you know, can we look to maybe move that number to 1% of our budget? Well, that's a big jump. That 1% of our budget would be $1.8 million. But really, 1% is not a lot to take care of facilities. And so the board did go to a half a percent. So we went from 500,000 to 900,000. And you're going to see in a slide later just how that works and how that operates in terms of long-range planning. And then finally, we had a late entrance into the assumptions, it got folded into the assumptions, but it really was a carryover, actually, I guess, from last year. You know, this band uniform conversation has been there. I've been in school systems where it usually takes a little bit of time before you really get it to the forefront, but it's made it. It's still there. It's in our final budget, and I know our band people are going to be happy about that. So that's a lot, just for a few lines, a lot of new expenditures right there. And we did also talk at the assumption time about the fact that we've been seven years without a tax increase. That's eight school years at the same tax levy. And so that this was likely going to be a year where that was going to come into play, and that, in fact, is the case. So I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Markowitz, and I have a couple slides later on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So as Mr. Jones mentioned earlier, the Peasars was part of our budget assumptions, and as you can see, it is still increasing. Next year is going to go up to 32.57%, which is above our 30.03% from this year, and that's a $2.5 million increase. So really, in the last two years, if you count this year and next year, it's approximately $6.2 million extra that we have to budget for this expense. Another one of the assumptions that we spoke, Mr. Jones spoke about earlier.
Barb, can, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for one second, please? Can we go back to that last slide?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to just go over this a little bit more detail. The retirement expense line that you see there, and you can put that back up if you can, in 2012, 2013.
Okay, there it is.
So in our budget for 2012, 2013, we put $8.2 million in our budget, correct?
Yes.
$8.2 million in 2012, 2013. In 2017, 2018, five years later, am I correct to say that we're going to put $25.5 million in our budget for that retirement expense? So it went from $8 million to $25 million in a matter of five years. And that is a, that is a line in our budget that we need to account for. So I mean, that's a, that's a big difference there. And if you look at the retirement expenses over the last, you know, steps over the last five years, it's hard to believe that, you know, we were able to do what we've been able to do, but, you know, that's a multiplier, you know, of three. I mean, it's three times what it was five years ago. So I just want to point that out. $8 million in 2012, 2013 in our budget, and in 2017, 2018, we're going to have $25.5 million in our budget for retirement expenses.
Just to add to that, Mr. Congdon, if you want to go back to the last year, they raised taxes in 2010, it was $6 million. So it's a significant, significant driver of everything we do in this district.
Mrs. Markowitz, has our state representatives and state leaders done anything about the Peasar issue retirement pensions?
They recently voted on, like, a 401K plan for new employees, but it doesn't really address the issue that we have with being underpaid in the current plan, and that won't happen for several years if ever.
Does it look like our elected officials are addressing the issue that we're suffering with right now? I mean, after all, they're participating in these pension plans also, so I have a concern about, you know, is it ever going to get done? It's always easy to pick off the low-hanging fruit, but, you know, what about the situation we're in?
As far as we know right now, they haven't done anything about the current situation of being short-funded.
That's where I'd like to suggest everybody take that in mind when we're voting for our state elected officials. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay, another budget assumption is, as Mr. Jones mentioned, the capital projects. So we did put $900,000 into our capital projects fund. We do have here a long-range facility plan. It shows five years of facilities, the work that we need to do. Basically, it's for roofwork, HVAC, parking lots, and other various projects that we need for our buildings. Some of these categories also go out 10 years. We also, the board approved using $900,000 for some of the projects, because as you see, the projects are a lot more than $900,000. So we, Mr. Trasko, Director of Operations, he looked at what the real needs might be for next year, and he came up with two items. One was a rooftop HVAC unit at Nishamani High School, and that's approximately $198,000. And the other was some sections of roofing at the high school, and that's approximately $700,000. And during the summer, we will be looking at this document again. It's a living document, and we will be adjusting and reworking it for the following future budget year. So how did we get to where we are at today? We started out with a $10.2 million budget gap, and we looked at every line item, every program, to see where we could cut, and we were able to cut $4.8 million from the budget. In the current year, we did use $2 million from our committed Peasars fund balance, and we are planning on using that for next year also. So we're down to $3.4 million budget gap.
Barb, we don't know yet what we need to do depending on that, with the budget cycle for next year.
Yeah, depending on the budget cycle, if we really need to use it, but we're putting it in. And you'll see in future slides that the $3.4 million gap is less than what we've had in previous budget years. And back to Mr. Jones.
All right. I have two slides, and then I'm going to turn the rest back over to Mrs. Markowitz. I think I'm done after that, but, oh, she says I have one more. That's right, I forgot. But this, it was important to talk about this slide because we did really do some difficult work looking aggressively at programming to see where we could do things differently to save dollars, because you know that that's part of the equation. Not only are you just adding to the existing program, but also looking to see, well, are there areas where we can actually save? So there were some of those areas. Transportation, we recognize that we have an opportunity to create some significant savings if we actually bring some transportation routes back in district that currently are done by our IU. And so these are smaller runs that are done for special needs students, and we believe and we know, because we've done the math, that over time, this will be a significant savings, 10 years, over a million dollars' worth of savings for the district. And so this is the beginning steps in this budget for that to happen. Also, looking at our contracted services with the IU and the programs that they provide and what we could provide here in district, there's a great benefit to having our students stay in district in Nishamani buildings with Nishamani teachers, and so there is an opportunity for some savings by taking three programs back from the IU and having them housed right here and instructed by our teachers. And so there is another, that savings there for this current budget is about a $1.2 million savings. And then retirement savings. We had some, a minor reduction through some attrition on staff, a couple positions that were not rehired, and we were able to absorb. And then also some of retirements, with some breakage from retirements, the number of retirees provides for some nice breakage that was allowing us to also do some things in this upcoming budget. And some of the things that we're doing, as much as we do complain, and rightly so, with that great increase in burden on the local taxpayer, not just here, but really in all communities across Pennsylvania, there are great things that are happening here in the Shamini School District, and this budget's allowing us to continue to do good things and to expand into some new frontiers as well. And so one of the things next year is a new program called Advancement Via Individual Determination. It targets students in the middle at the high school level, but it's also something that can impact our middle school students and our elementary students. So teachers are going to become trained, and this is a program that's going to impact for next year our ninth-grade students and a couple classes of ninth-grade students, and we'll have them come out and report to you here at the public board meetings to give some feedback and update on that program and the success it's having for them. We have a new senior year experience where students are going to be on the college campus for two courses in the fall, two courses in the, in the spring. It's a 10% of our senior class pilot, and this is part of our strategic plan, where we're looking at academic choices, how can we provide some new for kids to keep them engaged, to truly empower them to be successful in the future, and also looking at our role as a preparatory location for students to springboard into that secondary experience. And so we all know, very capable students who get into those four-year colleges and they struggle, and so this opportunity to be on a college campus and doing that work is going to be an exciting piece, and it's going to be unique to this school district. This will be a point of difference for us in the county, for sure. We are increasing our one-to-one technology so that next year, for the first time, second, third, and fourth grade students will have one-to-one opportunities right in their own classrooms. So all classrooms will have cabinets of Chromebooks that'll allow for them to go and use throughout the course of the day. Also, here in the middle school, we're continuing our one-to-one initiative, switching to Chromebooks in fifth and eighth grade, and then moving more Chromebooks up into the high school. This is a year where we're replacing laptops, and you can do two Chromebooks for one laptop. And so this budget is supporting increased technology, and actually, we looked at this cost over the course of the next couple of years, and we're actually going to be down the line able to decrease costs in terms of today's dollars with that plan. We are continuing preschool opportunities. We're advertising preschool better than we have in the past. We actually have run preschool for 11 years here quietly in two small classrooms. It started as one classroom, and so this is grant monies, really, that the district takes some extra effort to actually apply for and secure from the Department of Education here in Pennsylvania. And for this current year, we're applying to continue that program, but also to expand it, so to go from 34 seats up to 68 seats. That's still not enough. Still doesn't come close to addressing what is approximately, probably pushing 200 students who would qualify for that program, if not more, actually, now that I think about it. But there are plenty of students out there who could benefit. That's just a four-year population. You can do this in three and four-year-old. And actually, with more advertisement this year, people are telling us that they'd be willing to pay. And so there are some, this is an income-restricted program that actually is quite liberal. It's pre-K counts, it's what it's called. But we have a whole series of programs. We have Head Start right now at Lower South. We have this program as part of our budgetary expectation through flow-through grant monies. And we also have a program up to the high school that's open to anybody, where our students and our family consumer science teachers work with preschool-age students. We have some budget assumptions that we met that were positive from our perspective, additional elementary teachers in the budget, as well as those new band uniforms that we talked about. We are expanding the Amplify Science Program that came into grades six and seven this year, eighth grade next year, and that's a new program, nationally recognized, that focuses on these new next-generation science standards, and we've had success with that this year. We are updating our Super Kids program and beginning with first grade, and we're going to expand that update out, but that's an exciting new upgrade and a very successful program for us. And we have new English language learning, computerized labs. It's intensive online opportunities for our K-12 students who are in English language learning situations, and that's going to help differentiate, it'll help personalize that learning, and we're excited about that. And I think finally, our American Reading Company, this is another one of these points of differences. We have a wonderful ninth and 10th grade. It was started in ninth grade, went to 10th grade this year. Next year, the budget's going to permit us to move into both 11th and down into eighth grade. And the American Reading Company's program has activated interest, such interest in books in our library, that we have booked, we have book deposits where you go to drop off the unit. You all know about this, because you used to do this. You used to go to a place called a library, get a book out, and then return it to the library. Sometimes you put it into a little drop. Well, we now actually have book drops, not just at the library, but in the English hallway and in the main office. What other high school has books that are being taken out, and they have to put drops around the school so that students can actually get those books back to the library? It just doesn't happen. This program's been exciting, students, to actually do that type of reading, and we're real proud of the work that's happened. And I really wanted to take some time to talk about these things that are in the budget, things that are allowed to continue, some new programs that we're allowed to advance, and this is going to be positive for the system and positive for the community.
Okay. So what changed in our revenue? Well, the local tax increase, we did put into the budget an Act One real estate tax increase of a little bit over $2.9 million. When we did the assumptions, we figured it was likely that we were going to put a tax increase into this budget. We did go for the exceptions of $3.6 million, but we did not take them. So the real estate tax increase for the average residential assessment is $105 per year. Also, our basic ed state funding, state subsidy funding increased a little bit more than $210,000 over the current year, and our special education state subsidy funding increased a little bit over $18,000 over the current year. Looking at the revenue by the source, our local sources, three-quarters of our budget are local sources, and the majority of that is our real estate taxes. And even though the state is, it's good to have that money, it's useful, only really a quarter of our revenue comes from the state. And that's basically our basic ed funding, our special ed funding, and our retirement. Looking at expenses, if we look at it by category, we can see that our salaries and benefits are 70% of our budget. If we look at it by function, we can see that most of our expenses are going towards instructional programs. And if we look at the next largest category, support services, we do have some costs under that part, under support services, that also go towards student costs, and there are pupil services, transportation, and technology.
Hang in there, this is it, last slide. So this shows the history of the last few years in terms of total budgetary expenses and, well, I'm noticing a line missing there, but what we do have here is, most importantly, where you're seeing the, what we wanted to show is in that red line, the anticipated unassigned fund balance, because there's that number, it's actually a little different than the number that you saw earlier, because in this final breakdown, it includes a couple hundred thousand dollars of purchase orders that won't be in in time for June 30th, and so they're carried over, so it increases both your expenditures and your, it actually comes into the budget as unanticipated fund balance. I realize I'm saying a lot of crazy words at this point, but the point of the matter is this, that three-point, what was $5 million, it now looks like $3.6 million there, $3.7. As you can see, over time, it's a number that we've been able to bring down from 7.7, 8, 5.8 this last year, and now 3.6. It's money that comes in to make up the gap, it's money that's only used if it's needed to finish out that school year, and so in the past, we haven't always used that monies, but the last couple of years, last year, this year, those are monies that are being used, not in totality, but they are monies that are being used. So as you get closer in terms of that gap there, it is also requiring us next year to be much more careful when it comes time to actually implementing the budget. And so the management of the budget's going to become an important piece of the equation as well, much more so than in the past, and that's something that we're assuming for our
that part, under support services, that also go towards student costs. There are pupil services, transportation, and technology.
Hang in there. This is it, last slide. So, this shows the history of the last few years in terms of total budgetary expenses and, well, I'm noticing a line missing there. But what we do have here is, most importantly, where you're seeing the, what we wanted to show is in that red line, the anticipated unassigned fund balance. Because there's that number, it's actually a little different than the number that you saw earlier, because in this final breakdown, it includes a couple hundred thousand dollars of purchase orders that won't be in in time for June 30th. And so, they're carried over. So, it increases both your expenditures and your, it actually comes into the budget as unanticipated fund balance. I realize I'm saying a lot of crazy words at this point, but the point of the matter is this. That three-point, what was five million, it now looks like $3.6 million there, 3.7. As you can see, over time, it's a number that we've been able to bring down from 7.7, 8, 5.8 this last year, and now 3.6. It's money that comes in to make up the gap. It's money that's only used if it's needed to finish out that school year. And so, in the past, we haven't always used that monies. But the last couple of years, last year, this year, those are monies that are being used, not in totality, but they are monies that are being used. So, as you get closer in terms of that gap there, it is also requiring us next year to be much more careful when it comes time to actually implementing the budget. And so, the management of the budget's going to become an important piece of the equation as well, much more so than in the past. And that's something that we're assuming for our responsibility as well. I believe that's everything.
Mr. Jones, will you have that slide up, please?
Yes.
Just for, you know, public's knowledge that our $175,900,000 is the revenue, including the proposed tax increase.
And I'm sorry, yeah, there isn't anything missing there. You're exactly right. I was confused by that revenue word there, but you're right. It's all-inclusive right there. We just, in prior meetings, we've had it broken out, but this was just an inclusive.
And that's why there's such a jump from $170 million in this current year to $175 million.
Yeah, you have a couple of things coming into play there. That's one of the major pieces.
So, when we account for our PISers obligation of $2 million, 3.6 million in unassigned balance that we're going to use, and the tax increase, we're looking still at a structural deficit of about $8.6 million overall.
I heard you say that recently, maybe earlier this evening or yesterday. I forget when. So, I don't know that I would agree with the inclusion of the tax there, but I'm not going to take it away from you. I mean, really, you know, at this point, just like prior budgets had a tax number built into them, the deficit that we were talking about were the numbers that were in the unassigned fund balance and the...
Well, this is the first, the first year in many that we've had to have in the revenue. So, I want to make it clear to the public.
When you compare to last year to this year, you're right.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Barb and Mr. Jones. At this time, we're going to move to public comment. Once again, we hold this to three minutes. Please state your name, area reside, your profession, and please no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns, please.
Aaron.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks for your time. Thank you, guys, for what you do. We do appreciate it, even though I'm not happy with you. We all know it takes a village to raise. That's what they say. I'm going to say "community" as an update. It takes parents, teachers, neighbors, friends, principals, superintendent, school board to help rare children to be good, decent, kind humans and intelligent. Community needs to rally around the children, to be involved. And basic parental involvement is vital for them to flourish in our schools. But this school district has basically decided to neglect the basic, obvious needs of the children because of retention basin at Tonka. There is roughly 90 parking spots, 20 short of what's needed for support staff and aides. And parents, forget it, are not allowed. You're not allowed to be involved. You basically can't visit if you're picking up your child when they're sick, you're parking in the fire lane. To pick up your child at the end of the day, you have to get there about 2:45 or you're stuck in the parking lot for 15 to 20 minutes just for dismissal. Or you get stuck there for, till almost 4 o'clock to get out if you're parked. So, that's very disappointing. It was a really upsetting year for me. I couldn't experience any of my children's activities at the school. We weren't allowed to be involved in, or they just didn't hold these events that included the Halloween parade, third grade wax museum during the day, field day, forget it, couldn't go. Every other school, I got to watch their parents be involved on Facebook, couldn't be involved. There was no kindergarten graduation. I want you, guys, to absorb that. You got that with your kids. We didn't. Gingerbread lean, fourth grade move-up, but I think it got moved to the night, so don't get me on that one. No parent, student, breakfast, lunch. I heard there used to be grandparents ones. I'm not 100% sure of that. I've talked to a lot of parents, teachers, staff. They're angry, but unfortunately, they're scared ramification for their children or their jobs, so they're not willing to speak up about how ridiculous it is. There was original parking promised, proposed, you guys took it away. I'd like to know why. I'd like to know when it's coming back. We need parking there. It's just, it's sad. It's ridiculous that I can't go to my kid's school for any events. And I understand there's a budget in all this, but I know I'd be and a lot of people would be willing, this is kind of support these guys, to pay a little more in taxes for you to stop outsourcing, to ensure our community has jobs so we can flourish and participate. But I just want you, guys, to think, like, you got to go to your kids' activities. We don't because there's zero parking, because there's just giant dirt mounds of rebarb, of concrete, of debris, of wood, and kids playing it on on the weekends. Sorry. Very nervous and bad at this. But that's all, I just, what's the plan? I'm sick of getting the runaround. Thank you, guys, so much.
We'll address that in board comments for you.
Connie E.
My name is Connie Esmont. I'm a Neshamene bus aide, and I live in Langhorne. I'm here tonight to inform the board and the community about the situation that occurred in transportation last week when the summer bus schedules for special needs students was implemented for both bus drivers and bus aides. As it has occurred every year for the past 25 years, the transportation supervisor will go down a list of bus drivers by seniority and offer the available bus routes to them. Then the bus aides are offered routes that require aides based on the student's IEP. After acceptance, the supervisor will give both the drivers and the aides the list of students and their pickup times, which I received. This entire process was completed on Wednesday, June 14th. In the past, the drivers and aides were paid at their current rate. On Thursday, June 15th, the transportation supervisor was emailed by the HR director at 1:02 PM that all aides had to go through Source for Teachers, and we would be paid $9.50 per hour. There are only five bus aides affected by this situation. I've been a school bus aide for special needs at Neshamene for the past eight years. I have been, I have, I know each of my students. I know their needs. I have experience and I have communication with the parents and their caregivers. I am here tonight to inform you that not only is it not fair to me and to my fellow aides, but it also is not fair to the most valuable special needs students that need and require a dedicated and knowledgeable aide to get them to and from their educational experience. I please beg you to look at this. These are special children, and they need quality people. They don't need people sitting on their phones, sleeping, and not paying attention. I had a girl who seizured once a week on my bus. I have the log in my phone that I had to do and take care of her. So, if you want to put someone in there, you tell her parent, and you tell her. Thank you.
Amy.
My name's Amy Locasaw. I don't usually do this. I'm a bus driver. I'm here to speak about the same thing that Connie did. I've been a bus driver for 20 years. I'm here today to bring your attention to the recent changes in the extended school year summer program as it affects transportation. Last Thursday, as the transportation staff were picking their summer runs, summer assignments, okay, the transportation manager was advised that we're no longer following the normal procedure that we have followed for the past years. I've been there 20 years. The procedure hasn't changed. All of a sudden, we are being told, we're being advised, that the people who just picked their runs now have to contact Human Resources, tell them they're interested in a job, go apply online for Source for Teachers with references and background checks, okay? And they're not even sure they're going to get the job, plus their pay was reduced by 46% from $17.5 an hour to $9.5 an hour, okay? This is a time where most drivers already have a decreased amount, drivers and aides have a decreased amount of hours they work. It is a hard time. They don't make more than a couple thousand dollars if they do lucky in the summer. And you're cutting their pay in half, okay? I kind of lost myself in this talk. Give me a second here. Now, this was confirmed on Friday in the meeting, and obviously, it left everybody shocked and confused. The transportation aides are a valuable part of the extended school education program. They possess years of experience dealing with our special needs students. Most of them have considerable individual knowledge of each student, their medical needs, their behaviors. They are a valuable link between the school and the parent. They deal with the student's behavior and medical problems during the summer program. Okay, last year, we tried without success to use aides from Source for Teachers and another contracting firm in addition to the Neshamene aides. Okay, with the Source for Teacher and the contracting firm, either they failed this report to work when they were assigned to work, or they left after two or three days of work. This left the manager calling in bus drivers and cleaners to fill in for the summer program, causing last-minute rushes, okay, to provide a needed transportation for these students. Sometimes they were arriving late because they didn't have an aide. We had to call around for aides, right? This also caused you a conditional expense. I want you to know that. Because you paid bus driver rate for bus drivers to fill in as aides, okay? So, it cost you more for these subprograms that people don't show up for, okay, than it would cost you for the regular, have the Neshamene aides do the program. Right? So, what I'm basically asking you to reconsider this decision that was made. Go back to the old process of picking the people by seniority who have the experience and the talent to do the job and who will show up in the summer to do the job. That's all I'm asking, to be honest with you. To be fair with the people here who've been here for years, have been special aides for people, and they need the aides that they have. They're experienced, they're talented, they know your kids. Thank you.
Steve Verdis.
I hope the bus drivers and those supporting stick around because I'm sure that some of us are going to have comment in reference to what you're stating.
Okay, good evening. I'm Steve Verdis. I live in the villages of Flowers Mill in Langhorne. I am retired. Sometimes I sub at the high school, but not the last couple of months. I have a few things I want to talk about this evening, one of which is that when you follow the bus aides, and, you know, I used to come up here and say, it's very simple. Take care of the people that take care of Neshamene. These people have given their hearts and souls to the kids of Neshamene, and, you know, they're pushed aside when you feel that you have to save a little more money. But take care of the people that take care of Neshamene. It's pretty simple, in my view. I wanted to congratulate the board on this new budget and how they implemented it. I think that it's really a step forward in thinking in Neshamene, you know, trying to put the dollars that have been saved through consolidation into increased and better programming for the students. I just wanted to say that years ago, when I sat down with Joe Paradise, who was Barbara Markowitz's predecessor, I said, Joe, I'm still pushing for full-day kindergarten. How do you think it will, it will be? He said, well, we'll probably get up to 700 students in full-day kindergarten if we had it. And I looked at the projections, and we're pretty close for September to be where Joe said it was. So, I thank all of you on the board for sticking through in my tiresome repetitions for all those years and for sticking with the program of full-day kindergarten. I think that it will show that it's doing the parents and the students a great favor by having these kids being educated properly in kindergarten. And now you're bringing in pre-kindergarten, which is great. You know, you can't get too much education in this world. So, I'm looking forward to this transportation survey, which is like they used to say in the movies, you know, in the trailers, 10 years in the making. This transportation survey is assuming to take forever because I have complained about the transportation issues for years. So, I really would like to see how this has played out over the years when you transferred from Neshamene employees to outsourced employees. And I have a question and a thank you for you. The question is, in the new policy procedures, does the, there's a part that, in the first part of it, that talks about having a question and answers. Is that applied to the public comment or just to presentations? And finally, I think, on behalf of the band, I'd like to thank you for keeping the uniforms in the budget. Thank you.
Adam Kovitz.
My name's Adam Kovitz. I live in Levittown. I'm a digital marketing consultant. I wanted to thank you all for the moment of silence for Rob, for Rob Sanna. He was a friend of mine and a bit of an inspiration and a source of encouragement for me. His son and one of my sons are very good friends, and so, it was, it was pretty devastating with his loss. I know he kept, he was a very private person, and he didn't like to share too much about his woes. He was busy worrying about the challenges that the district faced. So, thank you for that moment of silence. I'll just keep this very brief. As they say, you bury the dead and you pray for the living. So, with that in mind, I've taken upon myself to start a, to raise money for Rob's widow, Grace, so that she can set up an educational fund for their two children, Andrew and Jamie. So, just as a public comment, I know there are a few board members that have already given some money for that. If you're, I pose this to the public, if you're interested in supporting Rob's children and their education, please, please, I'm going to be, unfortunately, have to leave right after this, but please get in touch with one of the board members. They know how to get in touch with me. So, thank you for your time.
Suzy Drake.
Suzy Drake, Neshamene High School teacher, taxpayer alum, union vice president. Speaking about Policy 105, I've noticed the changes and I've read the various iterations, and I do appreciate the changes to allow for comment. I do still have one concern, the idea that if something is a non-agenda item, that the only way it's brought to the board's attention is through a letter to the superintendent. As an English teacher and as somebody who prides herself on being aware of what is going on in the community and in the world around us, quite frankly, I think that limitation limits voice of our government and of our people. What happens in Neshamene impacts the world. We've seen it. You know, we might think we're just this minuscule place, but we've seen things go out. We've seen kids go out and do great things. We've seen the impact of the world on our students. We already have policies in place where you have to sign up, you have to wait for certain periods of time, you can only speak three minutes, you can be stopped. Why would we limit voice of anybody? Dr. King said, "An injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere." We need to be able to react to things in real time, not after you've had a chance to write a letter and wait for another board meeting. write a letter and wait for another board meeting. So that's my personal opinion, so I'd like to, I would like that to be changed in the policy, I don't know if it can be. I'd like to thank Dr. Hancock and her team as a teacher for 23 years, and as somebody who's had to do her time at the end of the year. It was not painful, and I gained a lot of information that I can use, so I appreciate that, I appreciate the candid conversation this morning with our superintendent and the new momentum in our district. And I am really grateful to be able to go to France on Thursday and bring back one of our Shaminie students, who I hope will share her experiences with everybody next year. Have a great summer, everybody, thank you.
I just want to clarify, Ms. Drake, and I'm not, I'm not sure if you are misreading, or if I'm just mishearing, but the restriction that you talked about was for non-residents, non-taxpayers. You, the resident taxpayer has opportunity to talk about, okay, then I understand, I just want to make sure.
I just want to add on to that, it's the way it's worded, it appears that there are more restrictions than there really are.
And Irene, as you always do, invite everybody out to the committee meeting so we can discuss this back and forth, and have a discussion back and forth on this. The more input, the better off we are as a board, getting something on the table that is going to satisfy the needs of as many people as we possibly can.
I think if we want to have a change to the policy about 105, we need to have more people come to the actual committee meetings, because I let people basically say whatever they want to say, and it's possible that we, it'll be changed, okay?
All right, moving on to routine matters. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, treasures report, check register, and procurement, card purchases, budget transfers, bids, and exonerations. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Sullivan, thank you for the second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven, zero. At this time, we're going to go to the 2017-2018 budget. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2017-18 final operating budget, fund balance removal for Peasars, the 2017 Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Act. Can I get a second for those three motions, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenback. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead, Steve.
As I asked some questions during the presentation, I just want to make sure the public has a full understanding of, at least, this board member's philosophy going forward when it comes to the budget. This is the first budget that I've been a part of that will include a tax increase. And I'm going to support that tax increase, because it's justifiable. But in supporting that, moving forward, we have to be even more diligent about our expenses, that we keep them within the ability of this district's taxpayers to afford while we provide the best education that we can. And it's a compromise. And I look at it as a compromise when I look at items. And we found a way, the administration brought us to afford six new teachers. And that's a great thing, but it comes with a cost. We've been able to still maintain programs, administration brought a way of revamping our technology program, but the biggest overall expense, being that of payroll, is something that is out of our control. And the only time we have any exercise over that is at the time of hire, and we have to be more diligent about how we hire in this district, moving forward. Peasars is a nightmare, I mean, is just a nightmare for this district. Imagine the things we could do in this district within this budget with an extra $10 million a year, because that's how much more per year we're paying than we paid in 2010. The fact that we get 50% of the money back from the government, or the state, we're going to give them 26 million, and then we're going to wait to get 13 million back, but that 13 million coming back's already assumed in the budget. It's not like we get that $13 million and we have it in a savings account. I mean, it's a real dollar figure, and it's expensing in the budget. Payrolls and payroll-related expenses are 70% of this district. And while I've stated publicly before in every meeting that I wish I could pay everybody what they want, how they want it, as much as they want, because you do a great job, and you're very maturous in the way you conduct yourselves, compromises have to be made, and sometimes we make compromises that we normally wouldn't make, but they're required. Out of the 30%, 28 to 30% that is nondiscretionary, we cannot balance what I calculate as an $8.6 million deficit. There's $3.6 million in actual deficit, $2 million in Peasars, thank God we have the Peasars reserve, but it's not going to last forever. And then there's almost $3 million in a tax increase. So if we're ever going to get to a point where we're going to be able to continue to afford things, we have to start looking at the biggest part of our budget in a much more stringent way, because I think we've just about squeezed as much out of the 28 to 30% that's discretionary that we can squeeze. We keep finding money here and there, but, you know, we used to be at nickels and dimes, and now we're down to the pennies. There's really not much there, and I do commend the administration for the amount of hard work that they put in, and the two new concepts that they came up with that were able to shift some, shift some dollars. The small bus concept and the IU transfer were very good ideas, and I don't know how much more is left, but I appreciate the work you put into it. Thank you.
Mrs. Markowitz, the real estate tax for the transfer side, is it going up 1%? Or is it staying at the 1%?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
On line item eight, real estate transfer tax, it's staying at the 1%, right?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to state, the biggest hit on this, I would have to say it's the Peasars. Would you agree with that, Steve? And this is where you have your state-elected officials and your state unions. They're untouchable, from the governor that's sitting there now and sat in the past, to our state representatives, I can't get anything done. So, when you're looking at these kind of budgets and deficits that are hitting us, go right to your state representative that can't get anything done, and go over there and shake his hand, or her hand, and say, "Thank you. Thank you for doing nothing." Not being an advocate. If there were advocates, you'd be seeing it written in the newspaper, you would see it on Channel 10, 3, and whatever other channel, 6, and ABC, thank you. If they were true advocates, you would hear it. I don't hear an advocate out there. I don't hear an advocate that's going to Harrisburg fighting this fight. So, find an advocate that's going to go fight that fight, because this is the fight. It's not a sugar tax or anything like that, that we need to be spending our time with, fighting that up and down the line or anything else. It's not getting legal marijuana done, it's not. All that is, is a tax that they're going to hit, and everything else. They already approved, what, 12 legal marijuana vendors or licensing? That's what they're spending their time on, legal marijuana, not drug addiction and treatment, not trying to get over to the school board money that we could use here. It's pathetic what these state people are doing. Our state-elected officials are doing absolutely nothing. We need a change. It doesn't matter if it's RD or independent, we need a change, because this is killing us. That's all I have to say, and I'm an advocate. I'm also a little passionate sometimes. There you go.
Mike, I want to amend my answer to you, just real quickly, because, you know, I don't want to remiss that, you know, we did sign a new three-years teacher's contract, which, you know, of course led to more expenses. That's $5.2 million over three years. It was a fair contract, I was not here to be able to debate it that night, and I expressed the fact that I would not have supported it, not because it wasn't fair, but because of all the revenue source issues that we are talking about tonight. But that is some of our, you know, expenses, self-inflicted. I don't want to just put it all away, but Peasars overall is the biggest single issue that we're now facing, because otherwise, we're in good shape. We're in good shape otherwise. So, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Questions or concerns? Okay, be it there none, the motion on the floor is for the 2017-18 final operating budget, fund balance removal for Peasars, 2017 Homestead and Farmstead exclusion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? We're going to go for a roll call.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
No.
Mrs. Hollenback?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Parentana?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to administrative, the personnel, Mr. Parentano, please.
Be resolved that the Shaminie School Board Directors hereby approves the resignation of Clark Stoneback from the position of principal, Albert Switzer Elementary School, pending his appointment to the position of instrumental music teacher for the Shaminie School District with an effective date of August 25th, 2017 or sooner.
Thank you for that motion, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Sullivan with a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Passes seven, zero. We're going to move to the personnel support, Ms. Hollenback, please. Oh, my bad, I just said, I'm going to go first. Personnel cert, yeah, certificate. I'd like to make a motion, or is this Steve, the one where you?
I want a flat line from your director.
Okay, all right, we're going to, at first, make a motion to approve 5.01, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, co-curricular resignations, co-curricular appointments, ancillary appointments, and summer work assignments. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Boyle, any questions, comments, or concerns on items 5.01, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7? Be it there none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven, zero. We pulled out item 5.03, so we're going to put a motion on the table to approve item 5.03. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Parentano, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I want to make a motion to amend the motion and remove line items number two, number four, and number 15 from the motion.
Okay, at this point in time, I would like to make the motion once again, continue with the-
Can you hold on one second, I did have one other question for administration in this motion. Line item seven, can you explain, either Mrs. Markowitz or Mr. Jones, what the increased contract means on that line item?
It was an individual who was decreased in her employment, we have an opening in the art department, we needed to fill, and so she's an art teacher, and we were able to increase her up to the point that we needed to, and plus, I think there is an additional point two to get her up, maybe point four, I don't have it right in front of me, I can get it if you need it, but she then fills the opening that we have.
But what is the reason for the increase, though? Is it a contractual thing? Is it time served, or, not time served, but-
No, you need to go back to your reduced people and offer them that opening when that comes up in their certified area, so that, we're required to go back to her for those-
Okay, and then, the particular employee had service with the district that allowed that continuous service with the district that then allowed that increase to be accounted for?
That's correct. Or even if they had no service, they would pick up where they left off.
Yeah, but this is an increase, though.
The increase is in her FTE, not in her service time.
Oh, not in her service time, all right, that's where I was confused at.
Her service time stays as it would.
Okay, that's where I was confused at, thank you.
Just for clarification, pulling out again?
2, 4, 15.
15.
All right, so I'd like to amend the motion on the floor to exclude items 2, 4, and 15 from the 5.03 appointments underneath the certificated personnel. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on that motion? And can I get a second on the amendment of the motion? Mr. Feather, thank you.
So, just to be clear, though, when we're voting on this, what's a yay vote and what's a no vote now?
Right now, right now, a yes vote will be to approve all items under that, except for 2, 4, and 15, which I'll make a separate motion for after this. We are going to be, a yes vote is for approval of the appointments under 5.03 minus items 2, 4, and 15. 2, 4, and 15 will be a separate motion after we're done this motion.
That's a yes vote.
A yes vote is to approve for it, is to approve those appointments, yes. With those three pulled out, not included. All right, we all got it? All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item 5.03 amended to exclude 2, 4, and 15 has been approved, seven, zero. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for appointments under section 5.03 for items 2, 4, and 15. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Ms. Hollenback, with a second? Somebody help me out here? Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns on items, or line items 2, 4, and 15 under 5.03?
Again, this is a yes, if we approve them?
Yes.
I would just like to, you know, make the statement, following my previous statement, that the, this is part of the reality of what we're dealing with. We need to exercise, where we're able to exercise payroll control, we need to exercise payroll control. I think Mrs. Hollenback made one of the more profound statements in executive session, is you have to live within the limits of what you live in, and if we're going to control the rising costs of this district, we have to make sure that, when possible, that we hire in the best scale range that we can. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but I cannot raise taxes on this community and then turn around and say I've done nothing to try and lower our operating costs where we can. We cannot do it through the 28 to 30% of the budget that's nondiscretionary spending. We have to start being serious about that 70 to 72% of the budget that makes up the majority of our costs, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, be it there none, I believe we should move to roll call once again. This will be a vote for line item 2, 4, 15 under 5.03 for the appointment, yes is yes for the appointment, and no is no for the appointment. Mrs. Burns, please.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
No.
Mrs. Hollenback?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Parentana?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
It's three yes, four no. It's three yes, four no.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I have a question for you, um, Mr. Parentano. Is this a majority vote, or does this have to be voted on with five as the, uh, controlling?
It has to be five votes to, to approve.
Okay. So at this point in time, we don't have a yes or a no?
That's correct.
We have three yeses and four nos, there isn't five?
Well, no, you didn't, no, no. The motion failed. You didn't approve it.
Well, it, it doesn't fail, it doesn't, you need five votes to approve.
Okay. Just for approval. Okay. If you have a comment on that, I have, I have no problem giving you some time right now.
Um, I did vote yes to approve them, those appointments, just because I don't think that we were clear um, in how the process was going to be. But as I stated, we need to have a clear process in place going forward because philosophically, I, I agree with Mr. Parentano that we need to have, uh, parameters in place so that we don't get out of control with our spending. But I don't believe that we were clear with the message from the get-go, so.
With that, with that being said, um, these, these appointments have not been made, uh, and I'm, I'm sure this is something that's somewhat, uh, different than procedure in the past. What is the, what is the ramifications for these three appointments not being made this evening? Mr. Jones, would you be able to help me with that?
Ramifications for whom?
Uh, for us as a district, for these courses, for these classes, there's-
Well, we, we went through a search process. We're going to have to circle back around. Uh, we had, we had any number of applicants. These were the, the, the best identified candidates for the position. Uh, I, I agree, Ms. Hollenbeck, I appreciate the comment that, you know, further direction from the board in terms of what you desire for the community would be helpful. I'm not sure that the items that were pulled to four and 15 make sense. And so we're going to need further clarification in the sense that, uh, a person with a master's degree coming and giving away two years' worth of experience and coming for step one, I think that that's confusing to me. Uh, you're going to need to clarify for me what it is that you desire for us in that process of hiring because it almost would exclude from you, from, from the pool, you know, master's candidates. You don't, you only would be hiring bachelors or, or, you know, something below a master's level. So, you know, we, we need to have that conversation because we need to go back, and I need to know what it is that you're looking for, for the community in terms of the candidates that you want brought forward.
So, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a question. Since the motion failed, are these appointments excluded altogether? If we circle back and we come to a consensus, these people can be brought back for, for us to vote on again?
Sure.
Yes. Right now, the, there are three positions within the district that are not filled as of yet. Um, our next scheduled meeting is on the 29th. I don't know if anything will be able to be done by then. And the following meeting is August 20th? August 20? Um, so, uh, Mr. Jones, I, I'd like you to, you know, kind of give us a timeline and, and what this is going to do for these positions. Uh, give us, you know, a kind of a, somewhat of a direction as to what you need this board to do from this point moving forward.
Uh, one of the reasons why we do so much work to get candidates in front of you tonight is because if we wait for June to happen and closing school, candidates like these would be hired by some other school district that did the work that we did. So, uh, what happens is, is we'll circle back around candidates who we've looked at for the position. Whether these candidates or others may be engaged with other school districts not available. So what I now need to do is we need to, uh, find a candidate that fits the, the defined profile that you're looking for in terms of the allowable expense to spend for openings such as these, and then bring them forward. I, I really, I, I don't know exactly what you're asking because, uh, hitting next week as a target. The reason you want to offer the contract now, too, is that having contract in hand secures that, you know, helps secure that person for the next year. Uh, offering somebody a contract in August, certainly someone may be there and people will be there, available for the job. Uh, but the goal would be to be proactive and, and try to secure the contract as early as possible.
And, and I quite understand that and express, you know, the same, uh, to you when we spoke. Um, but out of 450 applicants, um, I'm sure that we will be able to find, uh, what we need and what meets our criteria come, um, opening September.
So, I guess the criteria is, are what we need. Because, because one of those candidates has a master's degree, had two years' teaching experience, was coming here at the beginning as if he had no teaching experience. And if, if that doesn't meet the criteria, then I guess the criteria is going to be a bachelor's degree.
How, the, what? Number four. I understand that. Um, as I expressed, it's coming down to nickels and dimes and pennies issue. We have people coming up here today from our, uh, support staff complaining about them being cut and why that's happening. We just raised taxes on this community. We're deficit spending $5 million. We have to find people that will provide a quality education for our students in a more economical range when they start because once they start, they are in the salary schedule, and we have no salary control after that. So if we don't start being more aggressive in our hiring practices, I'm afraid that we are never going to get to a point in this district where we're going to be out of a deficit situation. Now, while we have very, very strong reserves, and we're using them, we're utilizing those reserves, they are not going to last forever. And then what are we going to do then?
I agree. I understand, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I, I don't know of a district that does, I, I don't know. You, you may. I'm newer here to this area. Uh, but I don't, in my prior world, I don't know of a district that does not hire somebody with a master's degree for, for an entry-level position. I don't know of that district. I think it would be a district that would be known. Uh, I don't know that that's a district, I don't know that that's what we want to be known as, the district that isn't, I, but, so I think we just want to be careful in terms of how you establish your parameters.
And, and, and the, the other issue, and, and so the public has some better understanding, is, is there are issues that are out of our control. Um, there is a, a law in Pennsylvania that basically bars the school district uh, from bargaining from anybody that is employed by them, even on a temporary status, when you would change them into a permanent status. While we can go to any other person, and there's people on this list that came from other districts, where we could bargain with them and establish a very good entry-level salary with the experience that they've, that they offer. So it, it's a double-edged sword. I feel terrible about it, you know? But I cannot raise taxes on my constituents and not exercise payroll control. That's all I got to say.
And, and, hold on, everybody, please. And, and I just want to make a couple of quick comments. Um, I understand everybody's point of view. But where we're at right now is that there's three appointments that were going to be made today that aren't. There's three individuals that are now, uh, were planning on an appointment that don't have one. Now, do they have something else lined up? Are we going to lose the opportunity to have them? I know we had over 400 applicants for these positions, which is good and bad. I, I hate to think that there's 400 people out there that need a job for, you know, what few positions we had. But, um, I just want to try to stop this conversation. I think this conversation needs to be moved into a committee. Uh, I need, I think it needs to be discussed further. Um, but I would just like to make the comment that I don't think, and, and, and like I said, I agree with a lot of what people are saying, but I don't think that, uh, us as a board, uh, I think, I, I don't think we, we, we did what we should have done this evening on this subject. And I just like to leave it at that.
Can I, can I offer, can I ask one thing of you? Uh, for a consideration, and it would be, require one of you to put forward a motion. I, I do believe that number four, the, the, the individual sitting at number four, that circumstance got blurred with others that were on that, that, that cluster of three. And if, if somebody was interested in putting that name forward, you could put that motion forward, I think, at this time. I mean, it's just a suggestion because I do believe that that one is confusing still to me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of line item four under 5.03. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Boyle, with a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Be it there none, roll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Well, you'll have your chance.
I'm making a comment.
Oh, oh, right.
I'm going to abstain from that vote with the, uh, express that I would be more comfortable in continuing the conversation with, uh, Mr. Jones and coming back on the 29th, uh, to, uh, to address that situation.
Go ahead, Mrs. Boyle.
I, I, I feel that I really have to say this. I mean, I mean, I understand, um, about the money, all right? Um, but I think that we need to emphasize the quality of, of the educators, okay? And sometimes, as in any profession, you know, uh, people who are better are, are going to cost more. And that's just, just the way it is. And in, in coming from an academic environment, I can tell you that most times people, you know, look at the, uh, the level of the degree, you know, the extent of the experience. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, and, 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 and these people went through the committee system. The 400 people, you know, uh, you know, were evaluated by the educators, you know, of Nishami. And I mean, and then the 19 people were picked as the most qualified people. And, and yes, we have rules that we have to obey and, and laws that we have to adhere to. Uh, and sometimes that makes the, the salaries go up. Um, but I think that, you know, that's just, that's, that's my point. We should go for quality. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Hollenbeck.
I, I know there's a motion on the floor for number four. I, I wanted to know what harm there would be, or what, I, I don't know where these people stand or anything, but to discuss it more and to have a consensus and to come back and vote on all three of them the following, I mean, we are meeting next Thursday. If that would do irreparable harm or not, I'm not sure. And, you know, the one thing I do want to say is, yes, I do agree with Mr. Parentano. We do need to watch our budget and our line item numbers. I, like I said, I voted yes because we didn't have a clear plan in place. But we do have to ultimately look at the children and programs because I will not cut programs for salaries either. So, I mean, there is a fine line there. Irregardless of all of that, we didn't have a clear plan in place. What is the harm to us and to the people that we're trying to appoint if we have more discussion about it next week in exec session and vote on it all three in totality next week?
I like to say that you can't have really good programs unless you have really good teachers.
And my children have benefited for great teachers here. Some of the best teachers my te- kids have had have been entry-level teachers. So, I mean, it's, it, it's, uh, it's a difference of opinion, but I respect yours, Mrs. Boyle.
All right. We have a motion on the table for, um, line item four under 5.03. Um, there was a motion, and it was seconded. Uh, and then questions, comments, and concerns. And I just want to get this out. If you're going to abstain from a vote, uh, you're, you abstain, and then you state your reason. You don't do it during comments section. Um, you can make comments, but I, I'd rather keep it to that, that protocol. Go ahead, Mr. Feather.
Can we get an answer first before we actually put this to a vote? What is the harm?
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, what is the harm? Tina asked a question. I'd like to get an answer before we actually make a vote on this.
Hey, they, I mean, it, it's obvious what the harm is. The harm is that we had three people that were expecting to be appointed this evening. Um, they, hope, you know, hoping, well, I, I say expecting because that's the way that history has been here in Nishami. Um, they may have something in the back burner, and we might lose them. Um, you know, or they may have turned down a position to take this position, to be available for this position. Were-
No, nobody did that.
Nobody did that, okay.
They're clearly, they are clearly under the understanding that they're not appointed to a position until a board takes action. The harm could be that you could get somebody who, who doesn't want this concern that's created by not being appointed, wondering what the issue is. Why was my name pulled? So that would be your concern. It's the reason why I put four back up there. I, I don't know that you want to create that. I really don't see that as the economic issue. I'm hoping that that's not going to be the economic issue, that a master's degree is going to disqualify. Because, oh, you know, what I would have for you would, I'd have the data that would speak to how many of the 400 have master's degrees because that would take them right off the, you know, the plate. And, and I, though I do appreciate and understand, and I understand the reason why some of the other numbers are, are referenced here, I do think four sets apart. That, that's a candidate, strong candidate, who is giving up two years of experience to come here and start as if he were as a beginning teacher.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns on the floor for the motion that's on the floor? Be it there none? Roll call, please, Mrs. Burns. Yes is to appoint, uh, line item four under 5.03.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Parentana?
Abstain. I would rather have the weaker discussion and then bring the motion back on the 29th.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, one abstention.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, excuse me? Oh, okay. At, at this point in time, um, we have two line items that were not approved. Uh, John, is there a, is there an issue with us, uh, putting that on the agenda for the 29th?
No, it would just have to be advertised as a special meeting, a topic, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, this 29th meeting is growing rapidly. Uh, it's going to be a full meeting. We thought it was going to be quick.
John, I, I have a question for John, uh, since I think it's pretty important to what, what we just did here. We made the motion to pull the three. Then we have, uh, voted on those three. And the motion basically won by lack of the yes votes.
The required five.
The required five votes. Now, this motion here-
Supersedes?
Supersedes that?
Correct. Because you have the five votes, and it only applies to the one candidate.
All right.
Four.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. We all sat on that? Everybody, uh, we got a little conference going on over here. We all good? We good? We're good? All right. Everybody's good. All right. At this time, excuse me, we're going to move to the Personnel Support. Ms. Hollenbeck, please.
Are we sure?
Not quite.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 6.01 retirements, resignations, 6.02 leaves of absence, 6.03 appointments, 6.04 co-curricular appointments, 6.05 ancillary appointments, 6.06 resignation of ancillary appointments, 6.07 NISA 2017-2018 salaries, and 6.08 summer work assignments.
Thank you for that motion. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Parentano, with a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a, a concern, and I, I hope the administration is keeping an eye on the co-curricular, that we do not have any appointments being made, uh, as we had in the past, but not the, the recent past, from what I could tell. That, uh, no one person is overlapping job duties at the same time. We're double dipping, as I would call it. Thank you.
That's only good with ice cream cones. All right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item 6.01 through 6.08 passes seven zero. Educational development, Ms. Boyle, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, 7.01, which is overnight trip, and 7.02, which is the confidential agreement for educational programs for students.
Thank you for that motion, Ms. Boyle. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Feather, with a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm sorry.
Opposed? Abstentions? Items 7.01 and 7.02 pass seven zero. Uh, Business Operations, Ms. Hollenbeck, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 8.01 through 8.13, which are food price increases, addendum to extend Mission One Agreement, addendum to extend School Operations Service Agreement, contracted services, Aramark Contract for Food Service Management, Advocate Consulting Services for Contract Monitoring and Compliance to the District's Food Service Program, Local, State, and National Contract Participation Authorization for 2017-18. I know, I can't speak anymore. Fund Balance Commitment for Peasars, Budgetary Increase for Federal and Other Programs, Year-End Budget Transfers, Real Estate Waiver 2016 Tax for Veterans Exemptions, Roof Replacement for the High School, and the Use of Nishami School District Buses and Drivers.
Thank you for that motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Sullivan with a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I would like to make a motion to remove 8.03 as well as 8.05 and vote on them- I would like to make a motion to remove 8.03 as well as 8.05 and vote on them.
Roll call. I'd like to amend the motion that Ms. Hollenbeck did. 8.01 through 8.13, I would like to make the motion, or amend the motion to exclude 8.03 and 8.05. Second, Ms. Hollenbeck, thank you for the second. Any questions, comments, concerns on the amended motion that's on the floor? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an aye for an opposed?
No.
Okay. Abstentions. Passes 7-0. At this time, you would like to make the motion, you want to do them separately? I mean, we try to get this up front so we know ahead of time, but do you want, you want them together or do you want them separate? I'm asking the board now before we have to amend more motions. Are we doing 8.03 and 8.05 together or are we doing it separate? At this time, I'd like to make a motion for 8.03 on its own. Addendum to extend School Operations Services Agreement. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Ms. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Congdon.
Yes.
Mr. Feather.
No.
Mrs. Hellenbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Morris. Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 8.05, Aramark Contract for Food Services Management. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Parentano, thank you for the second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Ms. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Congdon.
Yes.
Mr. Feather.
No.
Mrs. Hellenbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Thank you. Policy, Mrs. Boyle, please.
A motion to approve 9.01, which is policy updates.
Thank you for the motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question. You're saying nine to what?
9.01. Policy nine.
9.01, which is the policy 105 and policy 111.
All right, fair enough. I'm a nay.
I'd like to make a motion to pull policy 105 for further discussion. Not further discussion this evening, but I would just like to make a motion to...
All policies are fluid. All policies are fluid. If we want to bring them up in policy committee, we can change them every month if we want to.
The policy is not worded in the right way in which we discussed it during the policy committee meeting.
Right. It would have been nice if we could have...
I believe it is. And I have no problem putting it forward and correcting it as the policy meeting comes up if you find there's additional issues with it. I would rather get it on the books now, and then if we find further issue with it, like Mr. Congdon said, it's fluid, we'll just change it.
All right. At this time, I'm going to amend Mrs. Boyle's motion to pull out each policy individually. So, the motion that Ms. Boyle has on the floor right now will be amended to be for policy 105 only, and we'll make another motion for 111. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Oh, can I get a second, please, on the revised?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions, comments, and concerns on the revised motion that's on the floor? Be it there none, roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Ms. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Congdon.
Yes.
Mr. Feather.
No.
Mrs. Hellenbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
No.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 111. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Parentano, any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Ms. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Congdon.
Yes.
Mr. Feather.
Yes.
Mrs. Hellenbeck.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
No.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
All right. Moving right along. Other board business. Does anybody have any other board business?
Yeah, we did it. Yeah.
Did anybody have any other board business?
Six key lines.
We do have, we do have a little bit of board business that I need to handle. As we had stated, there is a unfortunate void on the board right now. The way that this situation happens is the timing of the void that happened on the board is prior to the election with more than 30 days. So, what the board is faced with at this point in time is we have 30 days to make an appointment to fulfill that board member's position up until election, which would be, you know, four months. So, what we're going to do is we're going to open up, starting tomorrow, anybody that would be interested in fulfilling the voided position for the next four and a half months. It's in region two, region two. So, if you live in region two, you're eligible. We will be advertising on the website. I believe there's going to be something in the paper. And social media and the instructions on how to apply for the opening will be included in all that. If you're interested in fulfilling the position up until election, like I said, it'll be about a four and a half month appointment to the board, please, you know, apply for it and, you know, you'll be interviewed. We will allow up until Wednesday at noon, not tomorrow, but following Wednesday at noon, the 28th, to accept applications for the position. And at that time, we will hold 15, well, 15, we'll be lucky if there's two or three, but we'll be holding interviews on Thursday, the 29th, prior to our meeting. And the board will appoint for that four and a half month period of time a replacement if we have people apply for the position. After that, what's going to happen is the Board of Elections will be putting the voided final two years of the term on the election ballot. And that'll be in November in region two. So, in November in region two, there'll be an extra line item in the polling, and you'll be voting for a two-year-term school board member. Once again, that'll be up to the people to apply to the state or county to get their name on the, you know, I'm sure you're going to have to get your signatures, you're going to have to petition just like you would normally, get it up to the state, notarized all the, you know, ins and outs that you have to do. And then you will be granted to be put onto the ballot. It's open to anybody. It's not a primary, so it's not just Republicans, it's not Democrats, it's anybody. It could be independents, it could be a Republican or a Democrat. You could have five Democrats apply for it, no Republicans, no independents, or you could have five from each group. You know, it's, it's an open, excuse me?
Open-ended process.
Yeah. Well, it's not open-ended, but it's a two-year term that is open to the many, as many applicants that apply and do the proper steps to apply through the county. So, I don't know if anybody on the board has any questions? I don't know. John, did I cover everything properly or somewhat properly?
Just with the independent candidates, it's to get on the ballot as an independent candidate, you have to receive two, or get 2% of the total or number of votes cast in the prior election for that seat. So, that's how many signatures you have to get, so.
Now, is that for Democrat and Republican or just for...
For an independent candidate.
Okay. All right. So, if you're an independent, there is a way to get, you know, obviously, your signatures. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board on this one? All right. And once again, you can always email the district if you have any questions on that item. All right. We're going to move to our second portion of public comment. Once again, please state your name, area you reside, your profession, and please no personal attacks, and we're going to limit it to three minutes.
I want to comment on a couple of things that happened in this meeting. First of all, I feel that these bulk approvals of four, five, or six items at once are a disservice to the public. For example, we pulled out 8.03 and 8.05 without discussion, voted on it. I'm sure that the public has no idea, since this, what you're talking about food service and performance of Aramark last year, and they don't even know if Aramark did a better job than was done previously for the district or a worse job. All they know is this 8.03 and 8.05 came up and it was very important to some people, but there's no explanation to the public. And I, for one, think it's a disservice to the public to do it that way. Secondly, I would like to finally agree with Mike Myers.
Mike Mars.
Mike Mars. I'm sorry, Mike. I am sorry. I've been called worse. I don't want you to think, I don't want you to think that I think your service here has been comical. So, yeah, so I apologize to you. Mike, I brought this to the attention of our local representative in Harrisburg on Election Day. And he told me that in truth, they don't know how to solve the problem. They have no idea. They're, I said, well, sell bonds, but that's going to impact something else. They could direct money from gambling to solve some of this problem. It's a gigantic problem, and they don't know how to solve it. So, that's the second thing. I do apologize to you, Mike. Third, I think that the vote on 5.03 is a giant step backward for the district. I think it's a disgrace for this district to now be thought of as a district who has no interest in the quality candidates that the superintendent and his staff may select, but they're just going to the bottom line. So, I want you all to remember where that and from whom that reserve that you're sitting on has come from in the past. And it came from the difference in the five years in which the budget was based on what you had offered to teachers and you actually paid them a significant amount less and it fell down to the bottom line. And that's where your reserve came from. So, I think it's a disgrace to go backwards when you're making all these great steps going forward in programming. Thank you.
Pita Bhakshi, I reside in Tarragon Estates, Langhorne. I actually agree with Mr. Jones. Do we want to identify ourselves as a district that does not hire a master's, a teacher with a master's degree? I have a master's degree. I'm an educator. I am also a parent and taxpayer in this district. I, as a taxpayer, I don't think I want to be in a district where, as a rule, we say we are not going to hire a teacher with a master's degree. And I'm looking at, I have no clue who this person is, I have no intentions here, but a person with a 13-years' experience, not being able to make $60,000, it's incorrect to hold that appointment back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. No one else is coming up? We're going to go to board comment.
Mr. Jones, could you address the Tuwanka questions that were placed earlier in the
Good evening. Hello. You did a fine job at the microphone. We all, many of us, have struggled with some of the same concerns that you have from the, as you pointed out, the teacher front, the administrator front there at the building. It has been a situation that has created some difficulties this year. Some nice things about it, we have a brand-new building, it's, you know, there are some positives, obviously, to that transition over into the new Tuwanka. This summer, we've been working with Lower South to resolve the basin problem and also to address auxiliary parking. We've been talking about auxiliary parking all year long. So, the current plan is, and we believe we are on course, and we're hoping that at their June 28th meeting, we'll receive the okay, the approval, or at least the tentative approval, finding their final engineering sign-off on the newer plans that we've now submitted.
You've submitted the plan for the lot?
Well, we, yes.
I've done my research, sorry.
Well, we have, I don't...
I think it's a 30-year process.
It's a what process?
At least a 30-year...
Oh, okay. I can't speak directly to it because all, my second-hand information, I know that I've seen a drawing for the lot, I know that the conversation has taken place, we're actually for, I can't say that now. Now that you say you have more information than me, I want to be a little slower on this. That's okay. Well, I didn't, I don't know for a fact that that's submitted. I was under my, it was my understanding that both basin and parking lot are tied together and that the approval for those will occur together. And so, the hope was that for the 28th, we would have that okay so that we can continue to move ahead and work on them this summer. So, that's our intention, that's our hope, that's our plan. And intentions, yes, for more parking. And actually, the original design had 47 slots, the new design has 60 slots, so that's even better on that front, too.
Will that be paved?
Paved. Yes.
Your time is up. I'm sorry. I'm kidding.
No. I mean, you know, when you...
If, if I can speak to that, my child does go to Tuwanka in third grade, and I have driven through there several times. And yes, there's not tons of parking spots, but I've always been able to find one. I haven't been able to find one at my other son's school in middle school. We're aware of the situation at Tuwanka, we're working on it, it will be addressed.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but you started out by saying that this board neglected, this board neglected nothing, okay? We're dealing with a township, okay? And, well, I could sit up here and tell you all the rights and wrongs that are, you know, and who's holding whose feet over the fire and who's doing what, but I'm not going to get into that. But this board has wanted to basically complete this project. I mean, you know, we had students in there in almost less than a year from when we put shovels in the ground, learning and being educated. The pile of dirt is on where the parking lot's going. The pile of dirt couldn't be moved into the basin to complete the basin because there couldn't be an agreement between the engineers. The agreement is being worked on. I think we have a very defined, it's a very defined thing. I wasn't going to just follow the direction. I had meetings that I could, like I said, I got involved because I have a lot of background with retention basins. And I did not want to do something for the school district that didn't make sense. I didn't want to waste money. I didn't want to go into a direction to rubber line something when it's absolutely senseless to rubber line that in the design, in the location, and for the purpose of that basin. I didn't want to waste taxpayers' money. So, I fought it, you know, and it wasn't even a fight. We went in, we met, we discussed, we got the engineers together to talk, and there's been, you know, an agreement that's being finalized at this point in time. And, yeah, positive meeting of the minds. But like I said, I took, I took offense to the... But like I said, I took, I took offense to the, the statement that this board neglected, and I understand you didn't mean it that way. But I just want everybody else that listened to your words to say that this board didn't neglect anything. We've been on, trying to stay on top of this from day one, trying to complete this project from day one. You know, so we can all brag that it was under budget, you know, and schedule now, eh, you know, it's, the retention basin's not done.
If I can specify to, Mr. Jones, to his credit, has brought up in every executive session that we've had, every one, since Tuwanka's been open, about the parking lot. We are aware of it, we're working on it, we're trying to figure out what the best way is to accommodate most of the children and the parents that are there. We could've done something sooner with smaller spots that wouldn't have addressed your field day issue, because there still would've been parents that weren't able to park there, because it wasn't enough. So we're trying to do it the right way, as best as we can, as quickly as we can. Mr. Jones has literally mentioned it every meeting. We're aware of it.
And in reference to the parking lot issue, you know, thank you for coming. You know, it, it keeps the taxpayers, you know, aware of what's going on. But I do know every one of us up here, and Mr. Jones, have been working on this. And a, a true advocate on, on the board side is, uh, Mr. Jones and Mr. Condon. And, you know, the, the holdup to this district, in, with that site, is the township. Now, you know, I don't wanna, you know, go to bats on it, but the town, the, the, the true answer is what you're hearing up here. What, what this Board of Supervisors down there is saying at their meetings, God only knows, who knows? You know, and what their, what their engineers would've runs uphill, I don't know. It's truly has to be in their seat. We, we were trying to do the right thing by the environment and the expertise that we have here, and doing what's right by the taxpayer. So, you know, we're, we're getting there, I think they're understanding it, we're truly, you know, this would've been done a year ago, almost, you know, all said and done. But sure, thanks.
Okay. We're still in board comment. Let me set the timer.
I wanna talk about Mr. Sanna. You know, Rob and I sat right next to each other for almost two years, and, and like most relationships, you know, you start out, you know, a little rocky on the side, and, and, you know, as you get to know each other, and you move along, and find out, you know, the other person's not as bad as you think they are, and, you know, you're hope you're not as bad as they think you are. And Rob and I became very, very good friends. And, um, I used to call Rob weekly, we used to talk business mostly, but, you know, I can always say in almost every conversation I, I ever had with Rob, he'd always find a way to talk about his family, when we were talking about, you know, school, especially school policy, cause he, he had kids in the school. And, um, Rob was just a, you know, a really good guy. He'll be sorely missed, and he was just a good guy, and, uh, you know, why bad things happen to good people in this world, I don't know, but it happens, and, uh, it's a shame. And I, I wish, you know, you know, the, the best to his family and his, his children. It's a, it's, it's really a shame. Moving on to some of tonight's, uh, issues, um. I hate to talk about money. It's a shame, I just wish I could be up here and just give everybody everything they want. Problem is, when I go to taxpayers, they tell me they don't wanna give me money. Now, some things may sound unfortunate, they may sound, you know, evil or bad, you know, but, you know, we're doing them, or whoever is putting the motions up with the best intentions that they can make the school district survive into the future. How and why we have a reserve has nothing to do with it. We have to make decisions moving forward that make sure we maintain not only the quality of education that we have, but the solvency of the education we have. The biggest problem with the motion tonight isn't about hiring masters, we hire masters all the time. There's masters on this list we're hiring. The problem with this is these arcane state laws that prevent us from being able to bargain with your own people. And I'm not gonna hold this district subject to these arcane laws. They're ridiculous. I can bargain with someone from Philadelphia, from Ben Salem, from Centennial, I can bargain with them. I can't bargain with someone that's done service here. That's ridiculous. A temporary employee that has done service here, I can't bargain with. It's ridiculous. Where would we be fulfilling, fulfilling our duty if we weren't taking the opportunities to bargain for the best we can for our taxpayers and for our children? That's the issue that was up tonight, has nothing to do with an individual, has nothing to do with their grade, their position. It has to do with our ability to remain solvent through something as simple as bargaining for a salary. Something that every other entity in the world is able to do, except the school district in Pennsylvania, when it comes to your own employees. It's an arcane, ridiculous law. And arcane, ridiculous laws have consequences. It's a shame, but that's just, just the way it is. With, um, overall, I was proud to support this budget, I was proud to be able to support a tax increase, even though people won't feel that way, but it was justified, it was time necessary to do it. We are now in, we're no longer leveraging our, our, our reserves anymore. In the past, we were able to leverage our reserves to get us through. We have, this current school year, we hit that cusp, where we can no longer leverage the reserves, now we have to actually use the reserves. So at the rate Peasars is going, heading towards 36%, no guarantee it still won't go up. And that 36% is for 10 more years. The reserve's only gonna last, conservatively, maybe five, six years, if we're lucky. It will last that long. What are we gonna do then? Who's gonna get up here and tell us to cut programs? We have to be wise about how we spend, it's a tough job. I don't envy anybody that makes a decision one or either way. I hope I'm representing my constituents the best way I can, if I'm not, they'll let me know. But I'm proud of the work we've done here in the Shammany, I'm proud of the people we have here. Going forward, hopefully, we can have a smoother process, and maybe, you know, the, the lobbying that the, uh, that the unions do up at Harrisburg, maybe it'll do something to get rid of these arcane laws. Thank you, and thank you all for coming out, and I would normally say see you after the summer, but we'll be back on the 29th if you, if you choose to come, come and see us, thank you.
Once again, as, as Mr. Steve Paritano pointed out, it's Harrisburg. Once again, I'm gonna say it. We have to talk to our elected officials that are coming, uh, back to us from Harrisburg, be it our state representatives and everyone else. So, uh, they haven't done anything, and they're not gonna do anything. Cause one is, they don't have to, they're, they're sitting in the same club up there called Harrisburg. They're not gonna do anything, it's gonna directly affect them. That's my personal opinion, or at least a few are. Or a few are trying. And I, I haven't, I haven't come up with an advocate yet, I haven't, haven't heard that person really stand up and, you know, hit the media, uh, with, with their ideas, including governors. So, I think we're all in trouble in five years, 10 years, and, uh, at this point in time. Keep re-electing somebody, you're gonna get the same thing. That's, uh, there's a saying for that. So, uh, one, two, the bus driving situation. I've, uh, made many friends in the, uh, the, uh, that union, let's put it that way. I've been less than impressed with, uh, union leadership. And, you know, remember, your union tried to, uh, get rid of you. You had a vote on it, they voted to get rid of you. It was the school board that saved your jobs, wasn't your union. Right? Six years ago. So, wasn't too impressed when they were trying to throw one under of the, uh, union, goes against uni-union. The whole concept of a union. You're, you're, you wanna save one or two to save your own job, and get rid of, uh, another job, and, uh, save a family member's job. I seen it all, I sat at the negotiating table. It's absolutely ridiculous. Then you have memberships, members high up, getting retaliatory on, uh, the outsourced people. That's not just, uh, immoral, it's not right. Shame on you. You send literature out to, to, uh, school board directors and things like that, and it's, you know, it'll catch us up with you, and it will. As far as the, uh, what's, what's going on here with, with this, uh, outsourcing, you can blame yourself, number one, but I'm, I'm a full supporter of you. I, I fall for your jobs, more than some of your leadership, then. I feel sorry for you, to be honest with you. Other than that, I don't really have much more to say. And, uh, hopefully you come back at the next meeting next week. Thank you.
Yeah, as Steve said, um, I'd like to commend the administration on the budget, I think it was a very good process this year, starting with the assumptions, it's kinda the way I'm kinda used to doing a budget. And, um, you know, there is two parts to a budget, there's expenses and there's revenues, so we have to look at both sides. And I think we did that this year, and, uh, look, no one likes a tax increase, I get that. In my day, in my daytime profession, I've never had any client say to me, Marty, I wanna make sure I pay a lot more taxes. It just doesn't happen. But, as, um, I've heard other school districts speak in the papers and on the news, our hands are kinda tied. We have, uh, some problems in Harrisburg with Peasars, and, like whoever it was, Steve said, they don't really know how to solve the problem. It's a problem, it's mushroomed, it's an unfunded liability. In corporate America, it's put a lot of companies under. That's kinda what happened to the auto workers, they couldn't fund their pension. So, we have to deal with it, and, uh, I, I think, uh, it was music to my ears when I heard Mr. Jones say we'll start the budget process in August, cause that's what we have to do, we have to stay ahead of this, not behind it. And maybe I'm a little bit more optimistic than others, but I, I see that reserve lasting a lot longer than four or five years. I think if we budget properly, and, uh, we're not trying to say we don't want quality people, that's not what we're looking at, that's not what we're saying. We're not saying we don't want people with masters, we want, we want quality people, but we also wanna, we probably need to give the administration a little bit better direction, as far as that hiring process, and, and probably get a little more involved than, and I'll speak for myself, than I did this time, so, uh, but overall, I'm happy with the budget, I'm happy it got passed, and, uh, looking forward to next year. That's all I have, thanks.
I'm just gonna say a few things, and I won't set the timer, cause I'm not gonna hopefully take too long. Um, I'd like to say that, uh, congratulations to the class of 2017. I was able to, uh, once again, uh, be on the field, um, and it was 30 years ago this month that I was on the field as a student graduating, and it was, it was, it was neat to be out there, and, and, you know, everybody says that being a school board director, you don't get paid, it's a thankless job. Well, that was, that was big enough thanks for everything that I've put into this job this year alone. Being able to be out there and, and work with Dr. McGee, and, uh, the buildup to the final of, uh, the confirmation of the diplomas, and, and, and being the person to actually say, you know, basically, you just graduated. Uh, it was a, it was a big honor for me. Like I said, it was the second year in a row I was able to do that. And once again, congratulations to the class of 2017, great job. We talked about the Tuwanka, um, we had a lot of people come out and, and speak from the busing department, okay? I remember it was almost seven years ago, I was, I was new to the board, and outsourcing, I had a big discussion with Joe Paradise at a, at a finance and facilities meeting, where him and I were basically only two people there, about busing, and it was gonna be outsourced and all this, and they were still buying a truck to work on the buses. I said, well, you guys are talking about outsourcing buses in June, and you're buying a truck in March, it just doesn't seem right, you know? But, uh, that was, that'll go on forever, every time I, I bump into a job, we talk about it. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, I, I am, because I, I know, I, I worked with Jack Connolly, he's a great man, I miss him dearly. I did a lot of talking with him in the beginning, when, when, when I first joined this board, um, we had a lot of friends in common. And, I was there, I, I, I didn't wanna see our, you know, local employees be outsourced. I didn't want it. You know, they're friends, they're neighbors, my next-door neighbor I, I grew up next to, you know, God bless him, was a bus driver. You know, it, it's tough, um, and it's, it's hard to, to, to sit here and, you know, and, and watch our, our professionals, and, and I went through this with our food service workers, when they came in, in force, and they sat down, and they started going after the board, the board did this, the board did that, the board did this. And I started hearing stories from different people, and I, like I said, I have friends that work for this district. But, this is something I didn't think I needed to bring up, you know, Mike said a few good things, you know, that, and I kinda understand where he's coming from, Steve and everybody. But, I want our community to work in our district. I want our district to be a family. I went here for 13 years in school, and I just, I'm in my eighth year as a board director. This, 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 this is my second home, uh, you know, and I love the Shammany, it was the best years of my life. The years I spent in the Shammany put college to shame, and I had a great time in college. But, I didn't wanna, I didn't, I didn't really wanna go here, but I, I'm pretty much forced to at this point in time. I heard tonight, you know, the source for teachers, and, and the source, you know, for the substitute bus drivers, and, and all the problems, they're sleeping, they're on their phones, they're doing this, they're doing that, it's them, 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 them. Well, some of that may be true, you know, I, I, I haven't gotten to the bottom of it yet, but I'm getting there. But when this all started going on, um, you know, STA came in and they were approved to do 21 runs for our district, and that was with substitutes. I understand we have people that might have knee surgery, or they're out for long, you know, for, for, for a long time. I mean, at, at the time that this report that I had the administration do for me was done, was months ago. And like I said, I didn't wanna bring this up, but I'm bringing it up now, because I want each and every person in the busing department to think about this. And I've had discussions with bus drivers about this already, but not in public, in private. We have 64 bus drivers here in the Shammany. In September, and six, out of 64 bus drivers, in September, there was 21 days of work. And on those 21 days, each and every one of those days, we had over four people call out sick, every day. October, 21 days. Total absences for the month of October for our bus drivers, 73. That's 3.5. Bus drivers per day calling out sick. Every day, every day. If I had a company with 64 employees, and I had four or five employees call out sick every day, how could I keep my cohesiveness of my company running? How can we keep the, the bus department running cohesively? Here we are in November, we're almost up to five, 4.89 people every day called that morning and said, I'm sick, I'm not coming in. Almost five people a day. Now, we have STA running some bus runs, and they're doing the substituting, and I understand. I wish we could have 100% of the Shammany employees running our, 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 you know, our bus department, not only doing the scheduling, God bless you with the scheduling, I, I don't know how you do it, I don't know how, I mean, you guys have a tough job, you have a very important job, you take our children to and from school, and the, the safety of our children is in your hands. And I heard the aides, God bless you, you know, our children with special needs, you guys are there, you guys are family. But when I come in in the morning, and I'm like, okay, I got 64 bus drivers, and now, which five are calling out today? Okay, now I gotta get a substitute, and you're gonna drive into a Levittown neighborhood. Anybody try, you know, we all know what it's like to drive around a Levittown neighborhood, you know, and these people are just getting their assignments that morning. Okay, you're gonna drive a bus and go pick up 50 kids in, you know, this Levittown neighborhood, and try to figure out where you're at in, in these neighborhoods. I mean, the streets are not, you know, Plumb and Square, there's no blocks in Levittown. And I'm gonna continue, because this only goes up to February. In December, 4.22, bus drivers every day called out sick, and I'm not talking about, you know, someone that. And I'm not talking about, you know, someone that might have had surgery that was out, like for a long term. I'm talking, here it is, six o'clock in the morning, we got to get our buses on the street, we got five or six bus drivers, they're not showing up today, we need to get substitutes. And it's not the same route, obviously, you can't have the same people calling out every day. January, four point four three. February, three point nine four absences. That's every day. We have sixty-four drivers. I asked Tim Trask to check the air ventilation systems in these buses, because, I mean, you know, and, and granted, they're in the contract, you guys have sick days, and you can use them. Nobody's telling you not to use them. You know, if you're sick, take them, use them, that's what they're there for. But us as a board, we have to fund the system. Now, every day, we have five bus drivers call out sick, we're still paying you, but now we're paying five other people to come in and replace you. So now, we're spending more money. If, maybe we had one or two days a week we didn't have any absences, maybe we'd be able to afford some more aides, and put more aides on these buses, and build up the department. Like I said, I want Neshamani people working in Neshamani, taking care of our children, but we got to work as a team. I'm not going to, I'm not going to accuse anybody of playing games, but like I said, if I had a company with sixty-four employees, and every day I had four or five people call out sick, how's my company going to be successful? How am I going to be around for years and years and years? How am I going to provide work for people to come in and do? It can't be done. It can't be done. And, and, to be honest with you, I expected, when I got this, I expected to hear a lot more horror stories as to what's going on. I mean, like I said, it's not the same bus route every day that people are calling out sick on, it's different, and you have to get these substitutes in here, and you have to scramble. I mean, it, it, you know, I, I just, I just don't understand it. And I didn't want to bring this up, I didn't want to bring this into the public's eye. But this has got to change, we got to figure something out. Now, if this continues, and we have to keep on doubling, doubling up on money, that nasty word of outsourcing is going to come back again. And I remember, seven years ago, I remember sitting up here with Kim Quetzalrak this afternoon meeting, and we talked about it, and I said, "No." You know, I, I know, I know a couple of bus drivers very well, and, you know, we can't be outsourcing, we want to keep this in. They're going to care about our children more than somebody else has gone to. You know, was I right with that statement? Maybe, maybe not, but that was my thoughts. But the way that things are going right now with the money crunch, the Peasars program, whatnot, that word of outsourcing buses is going to come up again, and what the savings is going to be. And, and, and I don't want that. I want this group here coming out and supporting, and saying, "Yeah, we're going to get better, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to be the best bus department there is, and we're going to keep our jobs." But I think we need to work as a group, maybe come to one of our facilities meetings, you know, and bring your, bring your concerns out, and, and talk to us. I mean, I sit in these committee meetings, and it's, it's the board and Steve Rotus, and Steve's missed a couple lately, too, and we're going to have to talk to you about it that after the meeting. But I, I, I just, I, I need to bring this out, we need to figure it out, okay? How do we keep this team of bus drivers here, and how do we make it stronger? How do we make it better? I mean, I think we've lost focus, it's just, you know, what's the contract say? No, I don't want to hear what the contracts say, I want to see, how do we make ourselves better? How do we make Neshamani better? So, I, I mean, and, you know, I may have upset some people with these facts, but, you know, in twenty-one days in September, eighty-five people called out sick. In twenty-one days in October, twenty-three people called out sick in the morning. In November, there was only nineteen days of working, ninety-three people called out sick in November. Ninety-three people called out in the morning, sick, in November, and we only worked nineteen days in November. Nineteen days of work, ninety-three people called out sick. December, eighteen days, seventy-six people called out sick. January, twenty-one working days, ninety-three people called out sick. February, eighteen working days, seventy-one people called out sick. Now, I don't have March, April, May, and June's facts and figures and numbers, because I didn't want to bother the administration anymore, because, see, in September, October, November, December, January, and February was enough for me. I don't need to know what happened the rest of the year. We need to work on this, we, how do we make this better? That's what I want you to think about. I don't want to see people pointing fingers, you know, and we have problems, you know, there's problems everywhere, whether it's substitutes, STA, in-house, there's, there's problems everywhere. Everybody has problems. You know, you walk into Wawa in the morning, and somebody's complaining about having to make another pot of coffee. I mean, everybody has, you know, you walk into NASA, you got an engineer sitting up there worried about he's going to have to design a new fin for the rocket, because it's not going to work right. I mean, everybody's got problems in work, it's how you get through those problems, and how you make yourself and Neshamani better is what I need to hear about. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second, please? Mr. Solomon, thank you for the second. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and good night.
Did everybody say that?
I.
If you will remember, we were supposed to get another report.
I don't need another report, that's...